Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. It is 7:30, and I call the school committee meeting to order. We are taped live. I always forget that piece. We are taped live with WMCT-TV, and we are streamed. So everyone rise, so we can have their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All righty. We'll dive in with the superintendent's report.
Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Family here in the audience? We have a few items on the agenda tonight, so we're just going to get rolling right through.
Did you turn your mic on?
No, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Good evening again. I know the folks at home heard. We're going to get rolling right through the superintendent's report. We are going to start with an introduction of our literacy supervisor. At our last meeting, we included in your packet the resume of our newly hired K-12 literacy supervisor, Ms. Ryan. At the time, unfortunately, she wasn't able to attend our last school committee meeting, but we are pleased to share that she is here this evening and that she would like to offer a few remarks to the school committee about her new role. So if you'd like to join us just for a quick moment, Ms. Ryan, and say hello.
Hello.
Just make sure the green light is on. There you go. Thank you.
Hello. Happy to be here. Thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer Ryan. I'm the new K-12 literacy supervisor. This is my 21st year working here in Marlboro, so very familiar with the community, but really excited to be in this new role and excited to work with all the different grade levels and get into the different buildings, working with literacy, so.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Great to have you.
We're ecstatic.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
The next item, as the school committee is aware, the school building committee was tasked with reviewing a variety of scenarios for the new Richer Elementary School project. One of the most critical aspects under consideration is the project enrollment of the new school. And as a brief reminder, we have been reviewing two enrollment options. Both exceed the current student population of just over 500 students, and that's reflected in our September student enrollment report, which we'll talk about later in the agenda. But the first option projects approximately 870 students, while the second projects approximately 950 students. And this evening, the project architects, LPA, and the owners' project manager, Vertex, are here to provide an overview of the two options, share where the school building committee kind of landed in their recommendations, and request a vote of the school committee on the enrollment projection for the new Richer Elementary School. And so with that, I will turn it over to Chris from LPA.
Thank you, Superintendent. Just to introduce myself, my name is Christopher Lee. I'm a project manager with the design team, and joined with me today is Peter Caruso, principal in charge, representative from the OPM, Chris Everly, project executive, and Steve Theron, senior project manager. And today I have just a quick presentation, just a handful of slides, just to bring up the speed. We'll just take a quick stop at the schedule. We started in May of this past year, and we've immersed ourselves into this project and community. We are still very early on in this overall project, and it's called the feasibility study, and that's two parts. And in the first part, we look to basically define and discover what's happening here. So we look at your existing schools. We look at where the school could go, and also what wants to be in the new school. As part of that first phase, we also looked at and configured a bunch of test fits on different sites. And so those are really just early on, just can the building fit on these different sites? And then we move into an evaluation period on whether those should go into kind of another phase of further evaluation. And so that's where we are right now in this part two of this first feasibility study. And we're at a junction where, just as the superintendent indicated, we'd like your input on the size of the school. Should it be 950 kids or perhaps 870 kids with an 80-student alum at the Kane School? So that's just outlined in this slide here, and I would be remiss to not say that the MSBA's grant program only applies to the Richer Elementary School. So any scope that, or addition or renovation that would happen at the Kane Elementary School would be the sole responsibility of Marlboro. To give you a little overview of what we looked at in terms of the existing school, we looked at both schools. To focus on the Kane Elementary School, it was built in the 1960s, and while it's well-maintained, it's also an expected condition for its age. I kind of think of cars, you know, a car that's used over the years, it's, you know, has its wear and tear, but can still work. There are no surprises. It's safe to use for the near future, but once we start looking at kind of adding on to it, renovating it, things start to change in terms of what's needed in the existing part of the school. And one of the other pieces we looked at is if these additional students were to stay at this Kane Elementary School, what would the actual space needs be? Because it's overcrowded, so you don't have your library, you don't have certain typical spaces a school would have. And it's a tight site. There's not a lot of options, and the only option there is, is to demolish the 1995 addition that houses the current kindergartens. We would demolish that and replace it with a two-story building, where kindergartens would be again on that first level, and we'd be able to fit about six of those classrooms. On the second level, we'd be able to fit eight general-use classrooms. It would conform to the current codes, but other than that, we start to get into what we call a scope snowball. And so I have a slide that outlines kind of the scope here. So demolishing the existing addition is a little bit of money. It's quite a bit more money to put the addition on, and with those two combined, the money spent triggers building code requirements, mainly accessibility, but also life safety in terms of a sprinkler system. And while putting those two things in isn't necessarily a lot of money in themselves, it's what comes with putting a sprinkler system above the ceiling. We have to take the ceilings down, we'd have to put them up, put the lights back up. And so there's a bit of a snowball effect in terms of scope and cost. And so that's kind of outlined in snowball number four there. We've also observed that the mechanical systems are beyond their useful life, they're expensive to run, and so that was something the city asked us to incorporate in terms of additional scope. There's some kitchen equipment that's not working, so there's a couple of things we are trying to address, but by no means is it a full renovation that's going to last any significant period of time. You can also see, there's always fine print, right? There's a little list of exclusions, so we're not really touching anything we don't have to, just to try to keep the costs down. So we're not touching the classrooms, we're not touching the bathrooms, the finishes, we're not looking at any envelope improvements to make it more airtight, things of that nature. And so the question comes back as to what option would this committee kind of move forward with? I've included costs here. So that first option of 950 students at the Richer School, the previous estimate came in about $170 million. You could save maybe $10 million by reducing the enrollment, but then spending another $69 million at Kane. And so on the surface there, that math is quite stark. But nevertheless, that's the decision before this committee. The school building committee is trending towards option one. It's just the new or renovated school. We're looking at primarily a new school at this point for option one. And so that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. I just had a question. So I've tried to keep up with the process. I wasn't on the committee, so I'm trying to piece things together, but during this, you explored renovating with an addition Richer, right? But that didn't make sense?
I gloss over a lot, but the MSBA process is comprehensive, so they have us look at a base repair option, just what does it take to get the building up to code? An addition renovation option, like you mentioned, we looked at two of those onsite. So those were considered in the last phase. One of the options dropped off early, and we continue to look at another. What's happening or what's trending that we're seeing is going to be disruptive, it's going to be more expensive, and it's going to take longer to complete. So those are some of the highlights coming from the addition renovation option.
Thank you.
So a couple clarity questions. As far as just Kane on that update, number one, anytime we would work on that area, we would have to demolish the kindergarten area anyway. Do I understand that correctly? Because...
Those are the modules, right?
Those are the modules. So my understanding is that if we were to touch that building, no matter what, that would have to go, correct?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Just because I think that that's something that, whether we do that now or at some other time, that's going to be an expense that has to hit, because that building can't be touched, if I remember correctly, to have any renovation done. And I'm kind of looking at you, Michelle, because you've been through that conversation. But, you know, the other thing is, is that at least with all of the exclusions you had on that lower corner, I also don't think that there was any conversation about a media space, a library. So we're not gaining, you know, that's not in the discussion either.
At Kane?
At Kane.
Oh, yeah.
So if we were to get a library back, it's basically taking a classroom, right?
Well, we revert back to the old library. There is a library there.
Well, that's what I'm saying right now. It's classrooms, so we're talking about it would be a change of a classroom space. We're not building a library like before, when Jarek was initially established, that had a larger library space.
Yeah, that is true.
Right? So I'm just asking, because if we're upgrading and Good Now had a library created, that's why I'm asking.
So my response is, there would be more space, because there would be net increase in classrooms. So there's, is a possibility to restore the library, but we didn't get that far into development of that specifically.
I'm just asking only because from a clarifying standpoint, we've often tried to make sure that what we're doing in each building, we're trying to make sure that we have the same space, you know, to make sure that each of the groups, if you will, have the same kind of support systems in place. So if we have a space for music, we want to make sure we have a space for music in all of the buildings. Same thing art-wise, same thing engineering-wise. So I'm just asking for clarity.
If it's okay. I think one of the challenges that the school building committee recognized early on in this process was that the, any addition renovation at Kane was so cost prohibitive, we didn't even get to conversations of additional, like, library spaces and things, because for the extra 80 students that we would place there, it would cost upwards of $70 million. So we didn't really get into the weeds, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, on the Kane side of things, very much so on the Richer side of things we did, and it's in the education plan for sure, as far as the library goes.
And thank you. I appreciate that. I just think that the building committee has been having those discussions, and we have not necessarily all been in there, but I think our community, even more so, does not necessarily know that. And I think that's really important, because no matter what, the money is going to affect the community. And so I think everybody really needs to have a really transparent picture about what can or cannot happen, or in making these choices, it's going to have a different effect, not only on the students, but as well for the community as a whole. And that's, I guess, what I just wanted to make sure is stated upfront. Financially, it's pretty apparent, the decision that needs to probably be made.
And the enrollment numbers will obviously change.
Right.
Because we'll have more room.
Right.
Space. So there's also that as well.
Right.
Well, it also sounds like it leads into our, we are having a community forum next week, so those who are listening who want to know more about the Richer discussions that have been having, that the school building committee has been having, should come next Thursday. We're having a forum here. It's next Thursday, right?
Yeah.
7 to 8? So that's, we'll be having more of that discussion. But I think the purpose tonight was to talk more about the enrollment, because they need to vote for the MSBA. So more discussion can be had next week on the...
On the direction as to where we're going.
But if we're voting on it tonight, we are essentially making the call on option one or two. So while we need the community to be having awareness, it is something that financially we're making the choice. We're putting, we're going down a direction, right? So, I don't know. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that some of that, because as you said, the fine print is not necessarily always going to be seen, so thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next is just a brief update on our revised Richer School Education Plan. At the June 24th school committee meeting, the school committee voted and approved the initial education plan for the Richer School project. That was submitted to the Mass School Building Authority. Since they have provided us feedback on our plan, we have addressed their comments and questions and updated the plan. We resubmitted that on Wednesday, September 3rd, and in your packets, you have a revised copy of the plan. It's quite detailed. You'll notice the responses are in red, so they just jump right out. You can see what the district responses are. Just wanted to make sure the school committee had the most up-to-date information on that.
Could I ask one question on that, if possible? And I apologize, really dense report, so it was a lot to go through. But if I remember correctly, there was a comment about dual language in the elementary school, something about, something about multi-language that was actually being taught, not in regards to the students, but actually like world language. I don't know if that's not ringing a bell with somebody, but I picked up on it about world language, and do you or do you not have any plans on that? Does that preclude us if at some point in time, we wanted to change things in the future? Or is that just right now, currently, where we're standing?
That's a great question. So we actually have to submit a finalized plan mid-October. The reason that they are looking, my sense is the reason they're looking for some of that feedback is our education plan really needs to match our space summary. So, right, like, here's all the stuff we want to do, and then here are all the rooms we need to do it, sort of. So that's where that question comes from. But at the end of the day, if the school is built and it's in place, and we decide to add a foreign language program, we certainly could repurpose the space for that. But of course, that's not the desired...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. I'm just looking. I'm scrolling through the whole thing to see if I can find my question.
Let's come back to it.
Okay.
Please continue.
In your packet, as we discussed at our last meeting, is the final version of a RFP of sorts for a streamlined strategic plan creation for the 2026 to 2029 plan. I know the school committee had requested to see a draft outline that we would send to prospective vendors to start gathering proposals on a new strategic plan and portrait of a graduate. And so in your packet this evening, you have a draft of that. I certainly welcome any thoughts or feedback that you may have on that. Once adjustments are made to the actual requests for proposals, we'll distribute that to at least three vendors who conduct this level of work. The expected cost is $50,000 or less, so we won't need to go up for a formal bid process. But after a vendor is selected, we would like to bring the vendor to the school committee to meet with the school committee and actually start the public conversations around the next phase of this work. And we'd also look to ensure the school committee is comfortable and approve the contract that we would enter into with the vendor. So in your packet is an overview of that, and I know a few members had mentioned wanting to see that and had some specific thoughts around how that would actually be written and framed.
So through the chair, can I just make a comment? Really interesting this morning, I happened to see, I think it was Secretary of Education Tatwiler was being interviewed, and he actually said that Dussie was actually doing something exactly like this. I just thought the timing was pretty interesting myself.
They're following Marlboro, clearly.
Yeah, of course.
Clearly.
It's what everybody should be doing. I don't know if anyone had any... No, we're okay with that?
I do remember what my question was regarding the, can you speak to the outdoor space? There was that...
Yes.
The education space. And just curious, compared to what we did at Whitcomb...
Yeah, that, so the outdoor classroom space...
I mean, Good Now. Good Now is what I meant, not Whitcomb. Sorry.
That's okay. I actually knew what you were talking about. The outdoor classroom space generated a lot of conversation. So in the initial education plan that was submitted, it was clearly stated that the district was not interested in outdoor learning space. We kind of revisited that conversation and weren't quite sure we were ready to draw a line in the sand and say that we didn't want to do that. In fact, we were thinking that maybe we would want to explore what the different options could be for that. So we do have a draft outdoor learning proposal ready, should we decide we want to submit it in the final draft that's due in October. I think it's in October we have to submit. So we do have language that actually frames out exactly what we would use the space for and how it would be set up, and some of the interdisciplinary units and things. But I do know, through many conversations with the school building committee, particularly our OPMs and architects who are here, many schools will put in their plans a desire for this space, it's constructed, and then it's not used. But our team wants to revisit that and look at what an outdoor learning space could do for our kids.
And if we did go with that, is that included in the price that was quoted in option two?
It's a whole different...
And/or one?
It's a whole different...
Or it's different from... But it could increase the price if we did something.
That piece, I'm not entirely sure how that was set up in the cost proposal for option, that would be an option one.
An option one.
You'd have to. Can you please use the microphone? Thank you.
Chris Everly, Vertex. It was not included in the initial pricing that was presented to you, but we are at a very early stage in the overall development of the plan. So what we do in order to make sure that we can prepare for the future is we have contingencies that are included in that pricing for things that come up over time. Not significant scope items, but at least minor scope items and changes that evolve, because we're maybe 15% of the way to a completed building at this point, and so there's a lot of decisions that have to occur over the next couple of years. The specific question or the concept of why that's brought up is because the MSBA has seen those spaces underused when they funded them, and so they want to make sure that when districts choose to fund them, that they also have plans in place to utilize them, because they don't want to pay grant money towards spaces that go underused.
Understood, yeah. Since you're up there, can I just ask you, just for clarity? If the, when we vote on the number, the higher number, the 950, would include a secondary physical education space, correct? And then the, but if we went with the lower number, that space wouldn't be there?
I don't remember. I think it, we have two at the lower space summary, and we're like two and a half at the higher. So I don't, did you...
If I'm interpreting... Chris is... Responsible for the programming and all that.
Okay. Thank you.
If I'm interpreting your question properly, I believe you're referring to the health classroom for fifth graders.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my big concern is I know that scheduling gym classes is always a nightmare. There's never enough space to accommodate the number of sections, right? I mean, this hap, we hear this all the time. So 950 kids, that's a lot of gym space.
76 sections of...
Yeah.
Is that in health a week that we would need? We would need three teachers. Ms. Richards and I have laid out the different space options we would need to do to manage that.
Okay. But I thought I saw in here, the higher number, there was a secondary space that would be able to be used for that...
Correct. There's a provision in just the higher enrollment for a multipurpose...
Like yoga and other stuff, yeah.
Could be an alternative PE space.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
But can I go back to the outdoor space just for a second? I'd love it if we could really get some insight from Good Now, because anytime we've been over there having some discussions, I feel like it has been brought up that they have utilized the space, so...
But I don't think they, I don't think that space was built for classroom. They're talking about outdoor classrooms. I don't think Good Now has an outdoor classroom space.
No, no. It's a...
It's a playground.
Courtyard.
Well, it's a courtyard. It's not a playground.
Yeah. Well, the courtyard space, but it's not built out.
Well, and I just think that it's been, that has been utilized. I don't know if that's part of the thought process, so, you know, whatever. It would be good to look at.
We can definitely get some feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Please continue your report.
All right.
We're almost there.
Next, we have our September student enrollment, and each of the subsequent pages is the enrollment from FY '25 to FY '26 by school, that goes through the actual numbers of students enrolled at each grade level, the number of sections or classroom teachers, and then the average class size by grade level, and the totals are at the bottom. I did provide, and I'm going to skip just all the way to the end to the summary. You will find a school enrollment changes FY '25 to FY '26 summary. If it's all right, I won't read all of this, because it just explains where the changes are, and there's just a lot of narrative here, and it just simply summarizes what's in the student enrollment tables. And I'll kind of skip to the headline at the end, which is, overall, the district enrollment from September 6th, 2024, to September 4th, 2025, is down 340 students, from a total of 4,758 students a year ago to currently 4,418 students. So that's sort of the gist. The impact is mainly in three of the buildings, the Richer School, the Kane School, and the High School. The High School was anticipated, so we were able to get ahead of that last year, as the school committee knows through the budget process and eliminating some of the teams. And the Richer School, we were able to make some recent staffing changes at kindergarten. That's where most of the impact showed up, as far as student enrollment decline there. So again, all of the active enrollment by school by grade is in your packet.
Thank you.
And the last item on my report this evening, I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Scazza, who is going to review a staffing reallocation plan that is just behind my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Tofalco. So in light of growing academic, social, and emotional needs identified at Richer Elementary School, tonight we are requesting approval for the following new staffing positions and sharing the reassignment of one position that we have in the form of a wraparound service coordinator. So outlined in this packet are the three positions that we're looking to increase support at Richer. With one would be an intervention coordinator, that is an additional position altogether. one would be an intervention coordinator. That is an additional position altogether. The second is a interventionist for ELA and math for grade five specifically. There is some logic behind that request. Although MCAS data is currently embargoed, we're looking at the preliminary data, and we're acting accordingly based on some of what that data is telling us. Grade five is a concern, the current grade five students. And one of the existing wraparound service coordinators to be specifically dedicated to Richer School, and Assistant Superintendent O'Brien can help me talk a little bit about that. So these positions are essential to effectively address the increasing complexity of student needs at Richer and provide educators with the tools, support, and collaborative infrastructure required to help all students succeed. In addition to these new positions, we are looking to reallocate, as I mentioned, the current wraparound service model to help minimize barriers to learning at Richer. So it's twofold. We're looking for academic support, and we're also looking to minimize any of the barriers that are prohibiting students from learning. So the rationale for the additional support staff, the first one, the intervention coordinator, interventionist coordinator. The current challenge is that in with the absence or in the absence of a dedicated FTE in this role, we are unable to successfully provide adequate support in the form of tier two and three interventions across all the elementary classrooms. It's just simply a job in itself to organize all of that. And the student needs, although like I mentioned earlier, preliminary MCAS data is still embargoed, we are not waiting to take action. And we have recognized a growing number of students at Richer who are demonstrating learning gaps. The impact is an intervention coordinator would allow intervention plans on a timely basis that are data-informed and consistently monitored. It would also allow for more effective progress monitoring, strategic deployment of interventionists, increased teacher collaboration and support, and a better alignment of academic interventions. So the second position would be basically a priority assignment as the wraparound service coordinators service the district as a whole. The current challenge is that family instability, housing insecurity, and chronic absenteeism are increasingly negatively impacting student achievement at Richer. And currently, wraparound service support staff are district-based and work closely with families across multiple schools. So a potential solution is that a dedicated wraparound service coordinator designated to Richer School would connect with Richer families or connect families to the community resources such as mental health, food, and housing supports, coordinate with school staff to provide holistic support to students, serve as a liaison between school families and outside agencies, and finally have a strong working relationship with the school administration team. The outcome would be that this would reduce non-academic barriers to learning, as I had aforementioned, and student attendance improvement efforts, and allow for teachers to focus more on instruction. And then finally, the grade five interventionist. The current challenge is that our fifth-grade cohort is showing significant learning gaps, particularly in literacy and math. This cohort is among the highest rates of tier two and tier three designations. So the need is that our current interventions... The need is that our current intervention staff are spread thin, and it makes it very difficult to deliver intensive support in all the groups or one-on-one. And then the justification would be a dedicated fifth-grade interventionist will provide targeted instruction based on data, prevent further skill gaps as students transition to the middle school, which is imperative, or really trying to allow for successful transitions from the elementaries to the middle school and from the middle school to the high school. And then finally, support classroom teachers in implementing differentiated instruction. So I know that's a lot of information. We've been, as I mentioned, looking closely at the needs specifically at Richer School and support Principal Richards and her team. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Not to put you on the spot, just from a funding standpoint, where's the money coming from? I don't know if there's going to be further cuts, or are we shifting positions?
Some of it is based on reduction in enrollment, which is allowed for position availability. So for instance, in addition to that, some of it are positions that have not been filled. So we have a point four communications teacher, I believe it is, at the high school. We did not fill that position. If you remember Sheldon Bischoff was teaching that.
Yeah, that's... He's a coder... Coding. It's computer science.
We're currently offering that in program of studies through virtual high school. We were not able to find a staff member to take that point four position. That is estimating around $30,000 or so. The other potential funding source is because of a reduction in enrollment, we have a teacher who is covering a long-term leave. So we did the math there. And that teacher stepping into the long-term leave would provide us with a rough cost savings of around $37,000. So right there with roughly around $67,000, we have what we would hope to be the majority of the salary for the grade five interventionist. The wraparound service coordinator is simply just a designation and a change to the priority of that individual. And Assistant Superintendent O'Brien can talk to that. The intervention coordinator is not something that we had originally funded for. So that is something that we would have to discuss in terms of where that funding could come from.
We looked on Monday at our central office leadership meeting, and it seems as though the money in our... We have, through our salary savings, we would have enough to cover that position for the year.
Okay.
In our salary.
In salary reserve.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm just concerned about dedicating a full wraparound service person just to Richer. Does that... Is that going to impact the rest of the district? I mean, do we actually need another person? Or do you think that with the reduction in students, it may not be an issue? I just wanted to hear.
So what we had done was just changed the model where the wraparound service coordinators were working very closely with the school adjustment counselors and doing referrals that way. This is a ded... One of the four... So Kayla Flaherty-Dawson will be the wraparound provider who will be the liaison for Richer School. So she's going to be going to their weekly care and concern meetings that are on Tuesdays. So she'll go to those meetings. That way, she can hear firsthand from the school leadership team what students that they have concerns about. She... The majority of the families that she is working with happen to be Richer families. So it's just changing the model a little bit so that they have a closer connection to the building leadership team. And just quicker referrals, that doesn't mean that she's the only wraparound who will be servicing families there because she's Spanish-speaking. Sometimes we might need a Portuguese-speaking wraparound. And there are wraparound providers who already have established relationships with families, especially if the referral was, say, from Whitcomb or the high school, and the sibling is in one of the elementary schools. So we're just changing the model a little bit and improving the communication and access to the building leadership team, more so than saying that one wraparound is going to solely be servicing Richer.
Got it. Thank you. And my other question is, and I'm understanding full well that the information's embargoed, but we don't... We're not seeing the same issues in grade five in the other schools? This is something really just specific to Richer?
Not to this degree.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you both for your reports.
Catherine.
Sorry. Sorry. I should have known.
Of course you should. So you went down the path, which I was wondering about. So with the wraparound coordinators, do we make the connection so we're handling siblings? So it's a family situation? If you've got them in high school, we're making sure that anybody else... So it's the kind of one-stop-shop, if you will, on making sure that family's cared for?
Yes. They service families, and that's why not just an individual student. So they take the entire family as a case management. So that's why it would make it difficult for... Because of just the cross-connection between...
Yeah. Nope. That's great. And with the fifth-grade interventionist, I guess that one of the things that hit me was I then looked back, and I'm thinking some of these kiddos were probably affected by our COVID situation. And I'm wondering if, when you guys have the chance and you're able to really share about the information, I'm wondering if that's where we're going to see where there are certain lapses of foundational information that they weren't necessarily able to receive. And then I guess I'm wondering if we then need to actually look really closely at our, say, our sixth, seventh, eighth graders to see if we're seeing a little bit of a trend of things that they may have missed that we then need to make sure that they're getting. So I'm kind of... I don't know. That hit me when I looked, when I really started thinking back grade-wise and then thinking, we probably then need to do a scrub of sixth, seventh, eighth relative to what were some of the things that we were seeing trending. So, thank you.
Anything else?
So just...
Yeah.
You need a vote from us tonight on these positions?
We need a vote on the funding for the intervention coordinator. All the positions already exist as far as job descriptions, but that position is a... That's a new position to the budget, so that we need a vote for.
Okay. So we can take that up under action items, and we'll just suspend the rules to add an agenda item to do that.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Equity, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So tonight, I want to update the committee on, first, the Grant 310, which is a McKinney-Vento homeless education grant. Marlboro Public Schools has been awarded a $25,000 federal grant for the FY '26... Through the FY '26 McKinney-Vento homeless education program, which is Fund Code 310. This funding will support the district's efforts to address the needs of homeless students and families with a projected enrollment of 185 homeless students for the upcoming school year. The grant will be used to contract bilingual counseling services through Cartwheel, targeting the growing demand for mental health support. Additionally, the district will continue to provide wraparound services that address basic needs such as food, transportation, hygiene, and clothing, while also offering trauma-informed and culturally responsive professional development for staff. Paraeducator and behavior technician summary for the week of August 18, 2025. I had given the school committee a brief highlight of the activities for paras and BTs earlier in August, but I want to provide a deeper detail on that week. So during the week of August 18, paraeducators and behavior technicians participated in a robust schedule of professional development and training. A total of 19 staff members completed a two-day safety care initial certification, while 97 staff members attended one-day safety care recertification sessions held across multiple district locations. Staff who were not involved in safety care reported to their assigned buildings for site-based activities, including reviewing student IEPs, completing mandated online trainings, and participating in ALIS safety drills. Midweek sessions included district-wide presentations on accommodations and modifications, addressing challenging behaviors, and updates on the new IEP form. Staff also engaged in ACE and ABA training, technology integration workshops, and building-level meetings to review expectations, procedures, and schedules. These activities ensured that all paraeducators and behavior technicians were well-prepared to support students effectively at the start of the school year. I also wanted to update the school committee on the supervisor of Health Services vacancy. Since the posting of the supervisor of Health Services position in early July, the district has not received any qualified applicants despite sharing the posting across multiple professional listservs. This role is historically... Has been historically challenging to fill, and we anticipate an extended recruitment timeline. To ensure continuity of essential health services during this vacancy, we're exploring the implementation of a temporary nurse coordinator stipends. These stipends would support critical functions such as coordinating substitute nurse coverage and managing activities related to school health grants. In the interim, the responsibility for evaluating school nurses will be reassigned to building administrators to maintain oversight and accountability. We will continue to update the committee as we progress with recruitment efforts and interim support measures. And finally, I just wanted to provide information on an upcoming CPAC event. If you save the date, the Marlboro Special Ed Parent Advisory Council is hosting an ice cream and mini-golf meetup for students in grade six through post-graduation, and details are included in the attached flyer.
Thank you. So that is Wednesday, September 10 at 6 to 8.
Thank you.
All righty.
At John Dennis.
Yes. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Just a question on the $25,000 federal grant, which that's lovely. Knowing that things have been getting put on hold, are we waiting to make sure that we have that money in the coffers before doing some of the contracting? I'm just, you know.
Yes. We have not moved forward with the contract yet. However, the grant... Actually, I'm sorry. It should have been... Is it in the agenda for under gift?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. So we already have it.
Okay. Sorry. Hadn't put the two together. I apologize.
Thank you. Yes. Absolutely. We always wait until we have the money in hand.
Okay. I pretty much knew that answer, but I wasn't sure with the way that everything keeps getting frozen. So...
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Everyone good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to acceptance of minutes. Minutes of the school committee meeting, June 24, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 24, 2025.
Motion is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the June 24 meeting minutes. Seeing that all in favor? Motion carries. Minutes of the school committee meeting, August 26, 2025.
Sorry, I can't scroll fast enough. Motion to approve the minutes of August 26, 2025.
Motion is on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the August 26 meeting? Seeing that all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
May I just ask a question? The two job descriptions... I had no problems with the minutes, but the two job descriptions that we had... Ugh. I'm having problems with my scrolling here. I apologize. The Assistant Director of Finance and Operations and the Assistant Director of HR, have we hired them?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good?
Good.
Moving on. My favorite part of the program, public comment. Is there any public comments? Please step up and state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Kyavon Duffy. I am from Marlboro on 276 Bigelow Street. And I am very excited to...
New Charlie microphone. Please. Thank you. So one more time.
Hello. My name is Kyavon Duffy. I'm from 276 Bigelow Street here in Marlboro, Massachusetts. Unfortunately, many of you have never met me before. I know two people on this in front of me that have spoken to me before. And I am very excited that they are here because I really appreciate their representation in this community. And I'm talking about the new superintendent. I think he is wonderful. The second thing is when you are talking to someone that is building something, the first thing that you want to know is about cost overruns, right? Change orders are the things that create cost overruns. So ask them what it will cost for the change orders. That's the most important thing. It's not about what you're going to add on to it. It's about what the change orders cost. Am I correct?
Correct.
That is correct because I have run large projects for states. Next, are you all familiar with the demographic of Richer School? Are we? We are? Because Richer School is a Title I school. Also, last year in Richard's kindergarten, 70% of those children were high-needs children. Now let's forget about all the other demographic things that are there because that is the most important part of the Richer School. Besides its Title I aspect, is that 70% of these children are high-needs. And now that is the same in some of the schools in this district, but not all of them. And that is another reason why Richer is different than the rest of the communities. Next, what time do we think it is appropriate for kindergartners to eat breakfast? This is a rhetorical question. And I will tell you right now, it is not 1:40 in the afternoon. And that is currently the time that kindergartners are eating breakfast at Richer. at Richer. Now my five-year-old gets on the bus at eight o'clock in the morning. They have breakfast at that time, and they are brought in. And I have had lovely people bring up to me that the school systems provide lunches and breakfast, but guess what? I grew up in a community very similar to this one, and it's called Taunton, Massachusetts. So I know that school buses show up too late for children to have breakfast in the morning, and that an adequate breakfast is more than five minutes. Now, as a dad, I get upset about this. The other thing I will say, you may have heard me say the Pledge of Allegiance and put some people off, because I am very proud of America, because my brother got killed in this country. And I will not, he got killed for this country. My brother was killed in Iraq in two thousand and eight.
Mr. Duffy.
And I, it doesn't matter, sir, because I heard you say the Pledge of Allegiance. I know, and this is not, this is a public comment, and I know you don't understand these things, but I get to come up here and say my piece, and then I leave, and you guys write about me on Facebook or something like that. But I just want to tell you that I heard you, and that is something that doesn't come back. I heard this whole room barely say the Pledge of Allegiance, like it was a chore. Whether you dislike the president that is here right now, or you dislike policies, or any of these other things, because I agree with you probably on a lot of things, aside from that, that was disrespectful, and you never know who is going to be in the room with you. Now, I would like to wrap this up. I would say, Mayor, I think that you do a wonderful job, and I know that you very much care about everybody.
Thank you.
And I have seen you at things, treat people very kindly, and I very much respect that, and I appreciate it. And I highly, 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 highly believe that you, like many other people, are not aware of the problem. First of all, I hope, so my whole point was, I hope that the lunchrooms in this new school can accommodate appropriate lunch for kindergarteners. All right? That was basically all I wanted to say, but I got a little hung up on the Pledge of Allegiance, because it's a little disrespectful. The other thing is, you guys really, there is no reason for Marlboro schools to be achieving where they are. There is no, there is absolutely no reason, and I'll tell you this right now. I'm very familiar with statistics, and I've isolated children's scores, and the EL thing is a cop-out. It is not the only reason why we score poorly. And if you isolate for children, we score poorly because we are in a high-needs community. We need to provide better services. That is a fact, and I hope, I haven't heard anything from the school committee, this is an election year, I haven't heard anything about the mayor running, this is an election year. I really appreciated all the mailers that I got the last time, I really do, and I think you deserve four years. So my point is, is that there are people that are aware of what you all are doing and the consequences to our children's education. I don't, we don't want to hear complaints about how much it costs to educate children. First off, we should have built things when interest rates were lower. That would have helped us. Second thing, it is un-American to not support children, to not provide school buses, to not make sure, to make sure that, right now, kindergarteners are doing math and phonics at twelve and one o'clock. Children are classically conditioned to eat at that time, and they're not going to eat until one forty.
Mr. Duffy, I appreciate your passion, and my door is always open if you would like to discuss this further.
I would love to talk to you.
Got it.
I know that you're a nice person, and I know, I know Dan is a terrific person, and he's the other person that I know on this, on this committee. And I really appreciate you all listening to me, and I very much appreciate, I know what happens.
Sure.
We do the Pledge of Allegiance, and we've been doing it since kindergarten, and we just don't pay attention, right?
Sure.
But the other thing is, is you guys, we pay attention. When you talk about our children, it's different than city council. It's different.
And I'm, that is a lesson that I've learned by being the chair of school committee. So I've always said this, even as a city council, that the best ideas come from the residents themselves, and constructive criticism is always welcome and encouraged, so I'll be happy to talk with you more.
I do want to say, I am happy to bring this up every meeting. I'll bring, I'll show up to every meeting. I have the means and I have the time, and I went to school for this, and I'm happy to do it. I'll dig into everything.
We can always.
And on DOJ, I have been, I have led states, DOJs.
Okay.
Stuff.
We appreciate.
So I'm just saying, I'm, don't, 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 this isn't a chuckles moment.
I'm not.
I'm just telling you, because I'm serious about it.
As am I.
I.
As am I.
I'm just letting you know.
Right.
I'm serious about our children's education, whoever they are, whether they're in a hotel or they're in my room, in my house.
I don't think any of us would.
No, because Richer gets not, we get the short end of the stick, so stop it. And it was just exemplified here in this meeting, where I heard people talk about providing us services when we are the school that needs the services.
Right.
Thank you.
We heard you loud and clear. Thank you. Public comments. Public comments, going once. Public comments going twice. Public comments for the last and final time. Seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. Action items and reports. Acceptance of donations, grants, and gifts. So, we have hope and comfort to ensure consistent access to essential hygiene products for all MPS students. Donated goods.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. It's monetary around one thousand dollars, and the motion's on the table and seconded. Is there any questions, comments, and concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. O'Connor, I am on the wrong, hold on. I'm on the wrong one. I'm sorry. It's for about fifteen hundred dollars, thank you. So that is, thank you. Metro Church, eighteen backpacks and school supplies for students, about nine hundred dollars.
Motion to approve with gratitude.
Motion's on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Cocoa Tree Kids, two thousand sixteen pairs of new children's underwear to be used to support student families in needs, about a thousand dollars in monetary goods.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded on the table. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. McKinney-Vento Grant for basic ongoing needs of homeless students and families for a grant of twenty-five thousand.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve's on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Perfect. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, everyone, for donating. Moving on to vote to approve Richer School enrollment based upon the Vertex and LPA presentation today. So we'll need a motion on which direction we would like to go.
I would like to make the motion to approve the enrollment of nine hundred and fifty students.
Motion's on the table and seconded. Is there any discussion as to why? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Let's do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, all right. And it carries. Nine hundred and fifty students is the enrollment for the Richer School.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to suspend the rules.
There is a motion to suspend the rules. And seconded, questions, comments, or concerns regarding the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries to suspend the rules.
And I would like to add the agenda to vote on the funding for the interventionist coordinator position for Richer.
The motion is on the table and seconded to approve, approve the intervention coordinator position. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports of school committee subcommittees. Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. The Policy Subcommittee got together today. We are going to be having a number of meetings coming up. We do not have those dates yet, but we have a number of things that we need to help on getting prepared for some new requirements from DESI on separating out some of our graduation requirements slash the CD requirements and such. So we will inform you all of those meetings coming up soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Seeing none. Moving on. Members forum. Anything? Good. Warren?
Anything? Whoop.
Sure, I guess there is one thing. Next Wednesday is the National Honor Society High School induction at Whitcomb, I believe. So congratulations to all students, and I know parents are more than welcome to be there.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's up to the seventeenth, right?
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Is there a business one, too?
Sorry?
Is there two?
The business one?
Yeah, there's one, one week, and then one's the next week.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Yes.
I just would like to put another reminder that we have the forum next week for the Richer School building, so I do encourage anybody who's interested in learning more about that project to please come here, what do we, twenty-five Washington Street in Marlboro at seven o'clock. And if you can't attend, it will also be televised.
Anything else?
I just want to remind the community that we're still looking for people interested in filling the school committee position. The letter of interest needs to go to the mayor by the twenty-sixth.
Friday at five.
Friday at five PM on the twenty-sixth, and we'll be holding our joint convention on Monday, October sixth, at seven o'clock in city council chambers.
Correct. Anything else? Need one more thing.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn's on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor, adjourn. Motion carries. We adjourned at eight thirty-one. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.